Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 13th, 2009 meeting, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Strayman.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Protam Najarian.
Here. Councilmember Friedman, would you please lead us in the flag salute this evening?
Yes. Please place your hand over your heart and join me in saluting our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be delivered by Pastor Mark Papendick, Associate Pastor Vallejo, Drive 7th, Adventist Church.
Joy be our heads. Eternal God, as we undertake the business of our city, we pause to ask for guidance and wisdom. As servants of our community, we ask for wisdom and knowledge to direct the affairs and decisions that would best serve our people. May our minds and hearts be keen and open to take the best actions possible. We seek a spirit of cooperation and coalition for reasoned results. May we build a better future for our city. May our deliberations be thorough, fair, and just. Though our leaders are each skilled and experienced in their work, we call for the added blessing of Your Spirit. In our differences, may we be kind; in our agreements, may we be humble; that our collective work may be for the common good and blessing of our citizens. All this we ask in the name of the Eternal One. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Kusakian, may we have your report?
The agenda for the October 13th, 2009, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, October 8th, 2009, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Let's move to the next item.
At 3:00, under Presentations and Appointments is 3A, which is Agenda Preview for the Meetings of October 20th, 2009.
Mr. Paul.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor Protam and members of council. Next week, on October 30th, the Glendale Housing Authority will not have a specific business agenda. The redevelopment agency will, though, with two items. The first is a report from the Director of Development Services regarding the report from the fourth quarter of fiscal year 2008-9 regarding Glendale Arts, and also the year-end report and revised capital improvement project list. Secondly, there will be a public hearing. This will be from the Director of Development Services regarding a parking reception -- parking exception for 10 spaces for a fast-food restaurant used by Rehahn to be located at 120 North Brand Boulevard. That evening, 6 o'clock, in the city council meeting, there are a number of action items. The first, the city attorney will be providing a report regarding the extension of the moratorium prohibiting the establishment of medical marijuana dispensaries. The second, the general manager of Glendale Water and Power will be presenting a report regarding the amendments to the city's water conservation ordinance and a number of proposed changes. Next, the Director of Public Works with a storm preparation report being updated literally as we speak. And then the Director of Planning with a report regarding the implementation of design review changes and recommended adjustments to procedures. Lastly, there will be a hearing. This will be by the Director of Planning with a proposed ordinance amending Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code, 1995, relating to the modifications of approved landscape plans when revisions are consistent with California-friendly plantings. And that would be it for next week.
Okay. Thank you. The next item, please.
3B is appointment of Ms. Mia Lee to the Audit Committee. Nomination was made by Councilmember Weaver.
Mr. Weaver?
I'd like to nominate Mia Lee back to the Audit Committee, and as with all the others that I'm doing that are reappointments, I'm not going to go into their resumes again. I think all the ones I've nominated have done an excellent job, and I'd like to see them continue. So with that, I'm moving Mia Lee for Audit.
Thank you. Mr. Howard, let me ask you a procedural question. We have perhaps a dozen or so appointments. Is there any way that these can be done en masse?
They can if there's no objection from any one member of the council.
Would anyone have an objection to us making all these motions and voting them all as a group? Mr. Drayman.
Mr. Mayor Protam, I have no objection to that this evening. I just would like to reserve the right for at least this council member in the future because as we proceed through this, we'll all be making a number of nominations, just reserving the option and the right to ask that we take one of them separately if that should arise.
That would -- I can't speak for Mayor Quintero, who usually runs the meetings, but I would have no objection to that as a council member.
It's just for tonight anyhow.
This is just for tonight.
That's the understanding. It'll just be for tonight.
So why don't we just go through each nomination? If you'd like to make any comments about any particular nominee?
How about going through G, because those are all mine?
Certainly, or if Mayor Protam and the council wishes I could read them all. Is there any specific direction?
Can you quickly sort out which ones are, Mr. Weaver's?
A through G here.
Certainly. A through G.
I'm just going to make the nomination of all those.
You're on, Mr. Weaver.
Okay. Well, at 3C is an appointment of Ms. Dorothy Dottie Sharkey to the Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Commission. At D is an appointment of Mr. Chang Wei-Li to the Planning Commission. At E is an appointment of Ms. Grace Walker to the Commission on Status of Women. F is an appointment of Mr. Afra Navarres to the CDBG Advisory Committee, and G is appointment of Mr. Aram Sahakian to the Transportation and Parking Commission.
I'd like to move A through G.
It's B through G.
Let me -- B through G.
B through G. Okay, let's take them as a block, then. Let's take roll call on items.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Second, the group. Let's take roll on B through G.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Mayor Quintero.
Councilmember Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Protam Najarian.
Yes. Let's move on, then, to...
Would you like me to read the remainder of the appointments?
Yes, if you would, Mr. Sackman.
H is appointment of Ms. Linda Pillsbury Goodman to the Commission on Status of Women. At I is appointment of Mr. Richard Bent to the Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Commission. At J is appointment of Mr. Christopher Welsh to the Transportation and Parking Commission. K is appointment of Mr. Alex Wu to the Building and Fire Board of Appeals. L is appointment of Mr. Varej Mardian to the Historic Preservation Commission. M is appointment of Mr. William Kane to the Planning Commission. And N is appointment of Mr. Edward Azari to the Audit Committee. These were all nominations made by Councilmember John Drayman.
Just I would place those nominations in as a motion. I would also like to just comment and remind the public that these are nominations at this point, not appointments. There's been a considerable amount of confusion, both in the newspaper and otherwise, that we, as individuals, appoint rather than nominate.
I'll second.
And if there's no discussion on those, let's take roll call.
Councilmembers Strayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Mayor Quintero.
Councilmember Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Protam Najarian.
Yes. Before we move on to item four, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Friedman.
Thank you. I would like to nominate, for the Historic Preservation Commission, Arlene Vidor.
And that'll be on next week's agenda. Councilmember Weaver?
I'd like to put in nomination others that I forgot last week, plus one due person. Stephen Lee to the Arts and Culture Commission. Eric Keshin to the Building and Fire. Hugh Yao to GWP. And I apologize, Terry Chan. I had appointed her at one time, too, but I can't do both. And Hugh and I had talked previously, so I'm going to honor that commitment to Hugh. And for Historic Preservation Commission, new one, Desiree Shire.
Okay. Those will be on the agenda next week. Mr. Drayman?
I also -- Mr. Mayor Protam, I also have three additional nominations to make. For the CDBG, I'd like to nominate John Sad. For the Arts and Culture Commission, Joyleen Wagner. And for the Glendale Water and Power Commission, John Miller.
You? Let's move on.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Drayman?
Mr. Najarian, I'm not sure whether this is the appropriate time or council staff comments, but it relates to nominations as it relates to the Arts and Culture Commission. There's a requirement that one of those appointees be a representative of the Glendale Unified School District. And I have nominated Joyleen Wagner. However, for future, I'd like to bring back the -- some discussion about how we would -- well, it's supposed to be a representative of the Glendale Unified School District. I would think that at some point, we'd want to know whether a nomination, that is individuals we might come up with, is of any interest to the Glendale Unified School District as their representative on, for example, the Arts and Culture Commission. Not that it'd be binding on a council member, but that the idea that they might want to consult with someone over there, the superintendent, or the board, or someone. In this case, if I were making that nomination, I would have checked with the -- someone at the GUSD, probably Dr. Escalante. In this case, when I nominated Ms. Wagner last time, she was president of the GUSD Board, so I assumed that she'd be a good representative. However, there's no requirement that it be a board member of the school board, so...
Does that mean, then, that the school district will appoint another one?
No. No, I'm simply suggesting that --
You'll do dual?
I'm simply suggesting that there be at least some brief discussion, that council members at least bounce their nomination off of the organization that they're supposed -- that that nominee's supposed to be representing.
Oh, yes, yeah.
That it not be binding on the council member, but at least get some feel for that. Is there a requirement, by the way, that we have a representative from the college as well? I don't recall.
I'll quickly check.
But if there is, I would suggest something similar to that, too.
I think as we go through this, we'll realize that we do have some fine tuning to the process, and I'm fine with that. As we realize some wrinkles, we could work to straighten them out.
You also had -- for Glendale College as well?
Well, it could be any community college, or even a private school, a vocational school.
All right. You had suggested before that there may even be potentially some combining since we are in the process of this reorganization, so maybe that all can be taken in one kind of look see at a later date.
Okay. Are there other -- can we -- is this a large enough issue at this point to bring back cleanup ordinance for the commission? Well, let's get through this next week or so, and I think maybe we'll see that some may pop up.
Yeah, let the mayor come back.
But do we even have an applicant who represents the college, or a college, or...
I thought one of these private schools. I may be wrong.
But I...
I'm not aware of any. I hadn't seen any applications.
I haven't either, so maybe to be sure that we're nominating people to the requirements that the board was supposed to be, we should look at those qualifications, and because we've made the board smaller as well, so that we don't tie our hands as we go into this series of nominations.
The same kind of issue that occurs with the DRB. We're not reappointing DRB members, but it's the same kind of issue. We have a requirement for landscape architect, and so on, so...
Okay, well, let's make a note of that particular issue, and then maybe include any others that arise through the end of this nominating process, and we can bring that before council with a report, and we can bat that around.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go to the next item.
City Council and Staff Comments, item number four.
Okay. Staff comments. USC was idle, so I'm not sure if Mr. Weaver has any.
Like you, and Mr. Starbird, and Mr. Howard, I'll wait till after they beat Notre Dame, then say something. No, I do have one comment, and I just want the public -- we could all say the same thing. We want the public to know that city staff is going full bore on trying to protect our hillsides, and we hope that all of you -- and I think Mr. Starbird will say more on this. Be aware tonight. The heaviest rains are supposed to hit around midnight, 7:00 to midnight. Be aware. Just know that we have -- I don't know how many people are out there. Hundreds of city staff members are out there trying to protect the hillsides and your homes. They're not superhuman, but we've attended briefings downstairs already as late as 5:30 or so, and got a lot of people working to protect you tonight, so cross our fingers that we don't get a big event.
Good point, Mr. Weaver. Let me go to Mr. Starbird, who may add some additional information on that.
Mayor Protam Najarian, members of the council, thank you very much. Indeed, we have been very busy, as you know, since the conclusion of the operation around the station fire. We have been in a planning mode to prepare for upcoming rains. We've all been aware of the October 15th date, which is when the flood control district says begins rainy season. And based on our own experience and comments from folks on the foothills, we all know that the rains never come that early. However, the rains have come that early. And fortunately, we've been in quite a preparation mode, both with community meetings and the placement of preventive measures along the foothills. I'd like now to have Chief Scoggins give you just a few-minute update on the activities as they came about today with respect to the EOC and our activities along the foothills. Then I'll turn to Mike Weedaker from Public Works for just a couple of minutes on the measures that Public Works has taken. Then lastly, we have received questions from residents. I thought it might be useful to have Peter Zovak, who is staff over in our Emergency Information Center, give you a sense of the questions that have been asked and some of the answers for them.
Just one thing I wanted to add, because it was brought up at your meeting downstairs. Don't -- if you're one of those up along the top, don't wait till you see the mud flow or the water. If you're cracking, if you're here rumbling, it's time to get out, because it's coming. Those few minutes might be the difference between life and death. Sorry, Chief.
No, that's okay.
Would you like to add to that technical advisory, Chief?
I think you covered it right there.
Now that we have your attention, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor Protam and members of the city council. Harold Scoggins, Fire Chief. Just as Councilwoman Weaver said, tonight is a night where in the community really needs to be alert. We're doing a lot out there in the community, but tonight, we're going to need your help also. As of 5:00 this evening, we activated our EOC down in the basement here of City Hall. And what does that really mean? That means that we have representatives from every division in the city performing very critical functions around the community in the areas that have been pointed out to be the hazardous areas tonight. We have two areas that we're focusing on this evening, and that's the north end of town, along the area where the station fire burned, near Duke Magian Park and that area, and also where the freeway fire burned, actually at the beginning of August, also in the Glen Oaks Canyon area. We will have spotters out tonight. We'll have a lot of feet on the ground tonight, really paying attention. But our best eyes and ears will come from the community. Just as Mr. Weaver said, if you hear trees cracking, if you hear rumbling, if you start to see a change in the flow of the water around your homes in the foothill areas, don't wait. And also, I'm going to ask the community that if we need to declare an emergency evacuation order, tonight is a night where we really want to seek full compliance in these areas of concern. We will not do unnecessary evacuation. If we do send the reverse 911 system message out, it is because things are taking place. We have measures in place for the community to go. If these rains are causing you to be a bit uneasy this evening, well, you can take some preventative measures and go and stay with a family, friend, a family member, or a friend, or even check into a local hotel where you can actually get a good night's rest. If we need to open up a shelter, we're prepared to do that this evening. But you need to know that tonight, throughout the course of this evening, is when we expect the bulk of the rain to come through in the foothills here. So your emergency responders are going to be out tonight in full force, keeping an eye out. And I'm here to answer any questions if you may have any.
I just had one, Chief. About how many city staff do we have out in the emergency center and out in the field?
It's hard to add that actual number up, because we have participation from pretty much every division in the city. As Peter's going to talk about, the EIC is activated, Public Works is out. They have been working for days and days and days. Water and Power is out, so it's hard to put a number on that, but at the end, we'll be prepared to give you a report on that.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly, Mr. Weaver, I think the past several days, and certainly going into this evening and for the next 24 hours, we have to be prepared to have people 24 hours around the clock. My guess is, though, you can count it in the several hundreds at any one time in the various operations. With that, Public Works has led, really the lead of the field efforts, to place K rails, sandbags, and to begin to get us prepared. But they have been joined with all of the field operations, Parks and Recreation, as well as GWP, their equipment, their people, along with all of the operations in Public Works for the past several weeks in getting prepared. Again, we'd like to have a few more weeks, but we are about as prepared as we can be at this point. Let me ask Mike Weedaker at Public Works to give you just a very brief overview. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Starbird, Mayor Protam, and council members. For three weeks, we have been working hand in hand with the Parks Department, whom were extremely proactive in scheduling two community meetings, which were extremely well-attended. In addition to information which we've provided, several hundred DVDs, which are now available online through the city's website and brochures, we have partnered with the LA County Flood Control Office, which are making home-to-home visits, advising residents and making recommendations on what they can do to ensure the safety of their homes. To date, we have deployed 3,000 linear feet of K rail in Glendale and 13,000 sandbags. We will have crews patrolling throughout the night. Approximately half of our field crews have been sent home, because they come on duty tomorrow morning, and half will be there tonight. We, in addition to the community meetings, had expressed to our residents that we would meet with them anytime, anyplace. And when Mr. Zern made that offer, I didn't realize that he meant that I would be meeting with them anytime, anyplace. But Mr. Zern's offer still stands. He is not here tonight, because he has been meeting with residents door to door, letting them know what is being done in their neighborhoods. So again, the offer to meet with any neighborhood group that would have a concern remains. Any particular questions?
Lastly, before I -- excuse me, Mr. Weaver.
I just want to say, the reason I want to talk about this, because, Sheriff Sooton, when this is all over, we will have some critics standing here saying we didn't do enough. I want the public to understand upfront, we've gone way beyond what many communities have done in getting prepared. Thank you.
And it's important to note that this is not limited to the foothill areas of Glendale La Crisiana. This also encompasses part of the Glen Oaks Canyon as well, that had a burn several months ago.
Last, but certainly not least, when we activate the EOC, which is the Emergency Operations Center, that's sort of the operational hub, where representatives from all of the city's departments and divisions come together to coordinate our response and planning for incidents like this. I need to note, in that Emergency Operations Center, are also representatives from our allied agencies, we call them GUSD. They have a representative there, and will be there for as long as the EOC is open. The Red Cross, the Pasadena and Glendale Humane Societies, our own Gears Group, they are all there, and they're staffed, and will be for as long as the center's open. We also have traditionally opened what we call the EIC, the Emergency Information Center. And that is where we try and consolidate information so that we can provide answers to questions for residents who call in, and the questions will be a myriad of questions. I've asked Peter Zovak, who helps head up that group, to give you a sampling of the questions that we've received so far, and some answers to them. Peter?
Yes, Mayor Protam, members of the council. The EIC has been set up for a little over an hour now, and I'll give out the number in case residents are interested. It's 818-548-3301, the Emergency Information Center. It is a distribution hub for information for the residents. Today, we -- at this point, we've received about a dozen calls, and we expect it to increase over the night as people are coming home from work and watching the news. The calls so far have been not too serious. It's really been a matter of residents trying to get information. The calls have centered around whether or not there's an evacuation order in place, and the answer is no. There's been no evacuation order in effect right at this time. A question has come up as to where residents can get sandbags, and sandbags are available at every Glendale Fire Station, as well as Dunsmore Park. And at Dunsmore Park, sand is available at that location as well. And they have shovels there. Residents are encouraged to come there, pick up their bags, fill up their bags with the sand that's there, and then go back to their homes. There was a reported power outage in the El Tivar, El Vista, Montecito area. That was a planned power outage to repair a pole, power pole that was -- needed some strengthening to be able to last through the next few days. And if it's not on -- power is not back on right now. It should be on within the next half hour. People are asking about centers that they can go to in the event that there is an evacuation order. As the chief had mentioned, there is a center planned for that. It would be the Civic Auditorium, and that would only go into effect if the evacuation order goes into effect. Residents who are nervous and wish to vacate their homes now are encouraged to go and meet with family and friends and see if they might be able to find a place there before going to the evacuation center, to the Civic Auditorium.
So for any non-emergency information, they can call that number at the screen, and you can give them the update, whether it's a rain issue, an impending evacuation, help for housing or temporary shelter. You have all that ability?
Correct. As these emergencies have gone on in the past, the Information Center receives a whole host of calls and questions and inquiries. And we're able to really be -- if we're not able to answer the question right then and there, we take their name, we take their phone number. We'll get that information, we'll get that answer, and get it back to the residents.
Gregor?
Thank you, Peter.
Any questions?
Thank you, Chief.
We'll be following the situation throughout the night and keeping you apprised. Information will be on the city's website, as well as anybody who has specific concerns can call the number at our Emergency Information Center. Thank you.
I have no other comments.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Mr. Drayman? Did you have comments?
No.
No?
Just very briefly, on a lighter note, I guess. This weekend was sort of a showcase of civic involvement and community involvement. There were a lot of events this weekend, and because they were all volunteer-organized and very successful, I just wanted to very briefly mention them and just acknowledge that they occurred, and to thank the people who were involved in their organization. The first, of course, was Unity Fest, which was very well-attended. It was a great event. There were thousands of people there, lots of performers, and I think it was a very enjoyable event for everyone who attended. The Armenian Chamber of Commerce had a really wonderful, elegant, beautiful event honoring women in business and in service. It was also very well-attended, and it was a pleasure to attend. The Police Association had an event featuring their canines, which are the police dogs, which are an essential, at this point, part of the police family, and which are supported completely by volunteers and by community fundraising. So they went out and really showed their stuff, and people brought their dogs. And our dog went, even though he's 16 and can hardly walk, but he perked up, and he definitely enjoyed himself as much as we did. The Glendale Historic Society had their annual home tour, which was also really wonderful, and showed homes all around Glendale. Glendale Memorial had a big fundraiser that had thousands of people, and it was wonderful to see everyone turn out to support Glendale Memorial. And Child Share, which is a nonprofit that supports adoptive families, and foster families also had a fundraiser that, I think, exceeded their expectations. So it's great to see that even in these economic times, people in Glendale always come out and support important groups. And I just wanted to thank everybody who was involved in all of those various events.
Thank you. And I'd like to just take a few minutes to update my colleagues and the public on some of my extra municipal activities. Let me start with the MetroLink Board of Directors. Several items that we've instituted, and you may have seen some of this in the news. We are currently obtaining funding for Positive Train Control. Positive Train Control, in brief, is a GPS-based accident prevention system which will automatically take control of the brakes and the throttle of the locomotives in the event an impending collision is detected. It's a difficult corridor that we run the trains on. We have Amtrak, we have our MetroLink, we have the Union Pacific and the freight haulers as well. And this is something that the Senate and our... And this is something that the Senate and our senators, Barbara Boxer in particular, is very concerned with. Unfortunately, it's going to cost hundreds of millions of dollars to do that. We are going to get some funding from Washington, but we're working forward, striving to get that Positive Train Control implemented. As that's being done, and until that's done, we are putting a second engineer on the critical routes, the routes where there are not a set of double tracks. We call that the second set of eyes. We'll have another engineer in the cab to detect any difficulties, anomalies, or dangers. We also instituted a program of inward-facing cameras, actually a video camera, in the cab to detect the actions and reactions of the engineers, partly as a preventative measure, partly as an instructional tool to make sure that they aren't doing things like texting or being distracted, anything that would take their attention away from their duties. We have new energy-absorbing rail cars, which are on their way from Korea. They are state-of-the-art, which would have unfortunately prevented, had we had them earlier, they would have prevented a lot of the injuries and deaths that we had at the Chatsworth Collision. These cars would have maintained their structural integrity. We're currently negotiating with Amtrak to run the operations on the MetroLink. We feel that they are perhaps a better operator than the previous operator, which was Conex Violia. Speaking of Conex Violia, I have been tapped to be on the litigation committee. The MetroLink disaster has led to a lot of negotiations and mediations with the French parent company of Conex Violia and their French insurance company. Those mediations are scheduled to take place in New York City on the 27th, which is two weeks from now. And I don't think I'm going to be attending because how can I tear myself away from the city of Glendale three times during the month? I don't think that's proper. We're sending another one of the directors there to take care of that. On the MTA side of things, we had an excellent result last board meeting, where the entire board unanimously expressed their support for the funding of the West Side Subway, which is a subway to the sea, as well as a downtown regional connector, which is another subway connecting the Gold Line to the Red Line and the Blue Line. It's very rare for the MTA board to vote unanimously to support projects. You can imagine that there's various diverse geographical, political interests in the county, but we worked hard, and we were able to get unanimous support. We're going to be working on the Long Range Transit Plan. That'll be voted on in a week. I'm confident that we will be able to include in that Long Range Transit Plan a rail line, possibly a monorail, possibly a light rail, connecting the Orange Line, which is the busway which goes east-west across the valley, to the Gold Line. Have that included in the plans for future development. The exact means are not yet prepared. Of course, we haven't done any EIRs, but it's something that I think is definitely needed. It would create an east-west expressway essentially across L.A. County, and I think there's a lot of support on that. So I can give you more updates on that. We voted to give the Italian rail car builder, Anssaldo Breda, a contract for $300 million to build rail cars in Los Angeles. They're going to be building a LEED-certified manufacturing plant. It's going to provide thousands of jobs in the construction trades, as well as thousands of actual manufacturing jobs and related supplier jobs, many of whom, we're hoping, employees will come from Glendale, and suppliers also in our San Fernando corridor who do industrial work, machine work, will be able to participate in that. I was gone last week. I was at the American Public Transit Association meeting in Orlando. I gave a speech there, and I met with the Secretary of Transportation, Ray Lahood, and the Director of the Federal Transit Administration, in an attempt to get some funding for all these great projects we just talked about. And in next week, I will be missing next week's meeting. I will be traveling to Washington, D.C. to meet with the Obama administration, again, to try and get some funding. We're talking billions of dollars for these projects. I think the general point at this time is L.A. is now speaking with a unified voice, and we are trying to obtain our fair share of federal funding and refuse to be beat out by the likes of New York or Houston or even Salt Lake City in that regard for transportation money. So that's all I have to report, and I'll miss you next week, but I'll see you the following week. Are there any other staff comments or council comments? Okay.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Drayman?
Actually, this is unrelated to what you were just mentioning, Mr. Najarzutin, but it did prompt me to remember a question I had wanted to ask. In a staff report not long ago, it mentioned that the city of Glendale had sent representatives, it didn't get into whom, what department or whom, to Washington on some issues in And I was just curious who that might have been, 2008, 2009?
On any particular issue?
Didn't say. Just issues related to the city.
I think we had a city delegation in 2008 with Captain Edie, myself, ISIS-related. I did. I think that was February. I remember it was cold. You sort of rate your, you can rank yourself on how worthy you are, depending on what month you're invited to go to Washington.
Actually, to be very honest with you, the report said 2009. I'm sorry.
Oh, 2009?
Yeah.
I don't think--
And I was curious what that was and what delegation went. It mentioned 2009. So--
At that time, February, March each year is the normal trip to meet with the lobbyists as the appropriations are being determined, and meeting with our federal legislators. I'm not aware specifically of this trip, but that would be the annual trip that staff takes. Usually, it's about a half dozen staff and usually one or two elected officials to go.
Well, and I was curious to know who that might have been in 2009.
Find out. Find out if there was a trip.
Thank you. I would appreciate that if somebody could get that information to me.
Mr. Kosaki, and let's move on to the next item.
On the agenda is consent items, including minutes following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
Mr. Weaver?
The consent calendar at 5:00.
Second.
There's no comments? Mr. -- oh, I think you need to abstain? Or first, do I need to abstain? September 8th? No, I was here September 8th. Okay. So noting an abstention on September 1st minutes by Councilmember Friedman--
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Mayor Quintero?
Hi.
Councilmember Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Protem, Najarzutin?
Yes. Okay, let's move to the next item.
Next item on this evening's agenda would be oral communications.
Okay. I have several cards for individuals wishing to make announcements. I'll start with Thelma Aranda Sugai, followed by Elizabeth Reyes.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, councilmembers, city officials, staff. Residents of Glendale wanted to invite all of you to a benefit concert for the victims of Typhoon Andoi. As you mayor may not know, the Philippines has been struck with major devastating typhoons. We're on our way to the third one. And so we've come up with a project that's going to be held here at the Alex Theater come October 22nd, Thursday at 6:00 p.m., and it will feature Lea Salonga, among others. For more information, they can call me or email me, and I hope we can flash the number, but it's 818-915-3558. And the email is tmt sugai at AOL dot com. Thank you so much.
And please repeat the date, then, of that event?
October 22nd. You are all invited. You shall be my guests on the red carpet. October 22nd, Thursday, 6:00 p.m. There are a few, we've got a few artists on the lineup, some big names, American Best Dance Crew, season champions are going to be there, season four, and of course, the featured and headliners, Lea Salonga.
Thank you very much.
So thank you. We hope everyone can support it. Thank you.
Thank you for the invitation. Elizabeth Reyes, followed by Leon Mayer.
Mayor Protem, city council of Glendale, officials and staff. We would like to invite everybody and the residents of Glendale for a training program provided by University of San Diego in cooperation with Mabuhay Alliance of San Diego. It's a micro-business technical assistance program, which is what we call MTA. The MTA program is a 32-hour program presented in five modules, designed to provide micro-business owners with step-by-step how-to training and skills to make the transition from being an effective business manager to a successful small business owner. Upon completion of the program, participants will earn two college credits at the University of San Diego. Now, what is considered a micro-business? A micro-business is considered to be the smallest of small businesses, those that employ fewer than five people and generate less than $250,000 in annual income. The event, the schedule is October 23 and 24, October 30 and 31, at the Incarnation Catholic Church on 214 West Fairview Avenue, Glendale. If they have any questions, they could log on to www.mabuhayalliance.org, or they can reach me at 818-675-1116. And my name's Elizabeth. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Leon Mayer, followed by Ron Farina.
Good evening, Acting Mayor Najarzutin, members of the council staff. My name is Leon Mayer, and I'm here tonight to talk basically for the Glendale Library. And we're having a very interesting event that hopefully this Saturday, you can come and meet a live Great Horn owl. One of the largest owls they have. This is courtesy of the Wildlife Way Station. Hopefully, they aren't washed away by the flood, and that'll be great for the kids to come there Saturday, 2:00, at the library to see the live Great Horn owl. No reservations necessary. Now, I'm going to make a follow-up announcement on the One Book One Glendale event. That event, the next noted author is a lady who's an educated author. Her name is Jenny Cho. And as you know, this year, China and Chinese is the theme. And Jenny Cho is going to talk about her book, Chinatown in Los Angeles. And this through, it's a photo album that she's compiled with the help of the Chinese Historical Society. And this covers 150 years of the Chinese people living here in China, I mean, in Los Angeles, rather. And it's going to be very interesting, and that is a week from today, 7:00 at the library. And then, on the 28th, we will have the final event of the One Book One Glendale series. We will have Lisa C., who, whose great-grandfather came to this area 150 years ago, and she will talk about her book, Shanghai Girls. Without going into the details about the book, as it's been discussed before, it's a novel about, based on some truth, about what happened to some ladies from Shanghai in between '37 and '57, who came from China, Shanghai, and came here. And incidentally, the book is available to be checked out at the library, and the book can be purchased in autograph there on the evening of 28th, all at the Central Library Auditorium. Everything is free. We invite everybody to come and enjoy it. And I don't know if I have any, I have 12 seconds left. Real quick, real quick. Stepan Partamian will talk about his book. Yes, we have a popular talk show host talks about the contributions of Armenians from the time of the first settler in Jamestown Colony right up to the present time. And that'll be Wednesday, October 21st, 7:00.
Thank you very much. Ron Farina?
Good evening, Mayor Protem, city councilmembers, city staff. It's always hard to follow a Great Horned Owl, but I'm going to try to do my best. And kind of a lighter note, I did want to invite the entire community to the 18th Annual Fritz Coleman Comedy Night. It's coming up on Sunday, November 1st. We're going to have two shows, primarily because we, for many, many years, were selling out our tickets when we only had one show. So we're having two shows, one at 6:15 and one at 8:15. If you haven't been there, you're missing quite an event. Fritz Coleman, our local news weatherman, puts together a show with about four to five top stand-up comics. It's a lot of laughs. It's a great tradition. It's going to be held at the Glendale Center Theater, and tickets are only $25. You can purchase them on our website, www.arcglendale.org, or call our office, 818-243-3121. There's a VIP reception at the Fenicia Restaurant just before the second show, so if you show up at 6:00, you'll be wined and dined for a while, just to prepare you for the show that starts at 8:15. Hope you can attend, support a great cause, and next week, I'm going to try to bring Fritz Coleman here. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Starburg?
Mr. Najarzutin, a brief comment while Ron is standing up here. At all of the meetings in preparation for the storms, Ron has been there. At our EOC this evening, as we activated it, Ron was there. And that's very typical of the Red Cross, the support of these incidents that we've had, and we have more than our share here in Glendale. They are always there. They're already beginning to staff up the shelter, and they have done that time in and time out here in Glendale. This is one of their major fundraisers in the course of the year, which they raise money to support their activities and efforts like they're undertaking right now at the planned for shelter. And will be there as long as we need them. They really do a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Starburg. Thank you. Something that we haven't spoken about, that I think bears mentioning, is the Relay for Life, which is this weekend. Usually, we have someone from the committee--
Good catch.
And the, I know Mayor Quintero is the honorary chair, and maybe that's how it slipped between the cracks, but it starts at 10:00 a.m. on October 17th, which is Saturday, at Shoal Canyon. It lasts for 24 hours, ending Sunday morning. And during that time, supporters are encouraged as a team or individually to walk around the track and bring donations to the American Cancer Society. All your food and beverages, lunch, dinner, snacks, late-night coffee, desserts. In the morning, the firefighters do a firefighter's breakfast of pancakes and sausages. That's provided to you gratis. The best part is camping out. Bring your tent or your pop-up or whatever you have, or you can sleep under the stars. And it's a great community event. The Luminary's--
It's Saturday evening.
Luminary.
That's the--
Is it? Do you know what time that is?
Saturday evening.
The evening, Saturday after sunset.
At 8:00.
At 8:00. A truly moving and significant event. It's great. All funds go to the American Cancer Society, and you'll see a lot of city staff there. You can corner a councilman or two or councilperson. I know you're going to be attending the Luminary event, so it's a great chance to support probably one of the leading causes in the world to find-- a, probably one of the leading causes in, in the world, to find, to find a cure to cancer, and mingle with some of your city folks. So, Shoal Canyon starts at 10:00 AM on Saturday. Okay, let's move on to the next item, please.
Under Action Items, at 8A, is City Attorney regarding revocation and findings regarding revocation of zoning use certificate, PZUC 2006-02342831 through 2833 Honolulu Avenue. A1 is a motion revoking zoning use certificate and making findings.
Okay, the council, several weeks ago, held a hearing, made a decision, these are the findings that back up that decision. I will not participate because I wasn't at the hearing, I can help move the process along, though I'll just be abstaining from voting.
Or discussion.
Or, or discussion, refraining from discussion as well. Is there anyone that'd like to discuss or make a motion? Mr. Weaver.
Move 9A1.
8A1.
8A1, second. 8, geez.
8A1.
There was a motion for 8A1 and a second.
A second. If there's no discussion, we'll take roll.
Councilmember Strayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Mayor Quintero. Councilmember Weaver. Mayor Protem Najarian.
Epstein. Let's move to the next item.
Next item at 8B is City Attorney regarding amendments to Glendale Municipal Code to create the Community Planning Department, formerly the Planning Department. Miscellaneous changes to reflect current titles and positions in reconciling different designations of city officers in the Charter and Ordinance, at B1 is an ordinance for introduction.
Thank you. Mr. Starbuck or Mr. Howard?
Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council, I either have a short 30-second presentation or 50 PowerPoint slides geared up and ready to go, if you'd like.
Take a poll, Matt.
Read our collective minds. Mr. Howard.
I want the PowerPoint.
I think I can read the tea leaves.
Hey, you're dismissed.
Simply stated, what you have before you tonight is an ordinance that accomplishes three things, should you choose to introduce it this weekend, consider adoption next week. One is the commencement of a process to create the Community Development, or Community Planning Department, consistent with council's direction September 22nd, to revamp and restructure four departments into three. This is the start, I would call it Phase One, and it would create the Community Planning Department. It would retain also the, it would note that it's also known as the Planning Department, and also, the Planning Director would also, would be, retain his title, although it would also be the Community, or Director of Community Planning Department as well. Because there are so many provisions and places in the code that we'd have to scour through to make those changes, as we begin to update the code and as amendments occur, we'll make those changes, similar to what we did when we changed divisions to departments. So, we'll be able to use an interchange, it will be a new department. Secondarily, it makes all department heads, with the exception of the Director of Parks, which will be coming in an ordinance in the next month, officers of the city. I've noted in the report what that accomplishes, and that it was somewhat fragmented, officers in the city were, some were listed in the Charter, some were listed by ordinance, and others were not listed at all. This now essentially makes all the department heads officers of the city. For purposes of this city, it does two things, and to want me to get into it, I certainly can. And lastly, there was some cleanup, because I was working in Chapter Two of the Municipal Code, I was able to update a number of the positions, particularly Public Works, to reflect the current titles and functions. Information Services, a broad description of their functions and duties, as well as changing the, making some miscellaneous changes to the Department of Water and Power, still said Division of Public Service, we made those changes. So, we were able to do some update and cleanup at the same time. Please answer any questions you might have.
Councilmember Friedman.
Do these amendments also address the Parks Commission?
No, they do not. It really is just the Community Planning Department, the council, when, in September 22nd, when you had the discussion, looked at three different departments, combining essentially a functions of four, and realigning a number of departments. This really just starts with Community Planning Department, which is the Planning Department, along with some functions of Community Development, as well as some of the functions of the permitting process.
Mr. Starbuck.
I might add, we'll be in with the functions that'll address the Parks and Recreation being renamed to Community Services and Parks, and then the, the same actions with respect to Development Services to its new title, in subsequent phases. And that, and that's an excellent point. That report, along with an ordinance for your consideration, will be coming to you within the next 30 days. But I wanted to start phasing this in as quickly as possible, and this was the first one that I did.
The only reason I bring it up, and I know it's off-topic, it's because we are making appointments, and because I think that the mission of that commission needs to be reexamined as we change the role of that department. As we're making the, I want to be sure that our commission appointments are in line with the qualifications that that new board and might want to have.
Sounds like, if I may, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of council, certainly it sounds like it's something we might want to add to the list of the issues involving boards and commissions that we can bring forward to you in another report.
Sounds like a good idea, I would support that. Mr. Weaver.
I'll introduce the ordinance, it's 8B1.
Thank you.
I'll second. I don't have to, never mind. I'll take my second back.
For emphasis.
Save it for next.
Mr. Kasakian, what's next?
Returning to oral communication.
Okay.
Discussion is limited, time is not part of this agenda, speaker is allowed five minutes. Members of the council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City Manager, Mayor, for the matter, to their appropriate department for an investigation or report.
Let's go to Mr. Lee Scott, followed by Michael Tien.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, council members and staff. My name is Lee Scott. I'm here tonight to present a proposal to preserve the few and precious remaining streams of Glendale. Yes, there are free-flowing year-round streams in Glendale. The City of Glendale Municipal Code provides for specific protections for blue-line streams only. A blue-line stream is a natural stream course that appears on the US Geological Survey, USGS Topographical Map, as a blue-line stream, as a blue line. We propose, we propose that all streams be given the benefit of protection under the City of Glendale Municipal Code. That code states that no grading, engineered slopes, housing construction, streets, utilities, or other man-made features shall be permitted within 30 feet of the center line of any identified blue-line stream. Grading may be allowed between 30 and 100 feet from the center line of any identified blue-line stream, provided that any riparian habitat shall be fully preserved. I first became interested in this stream issue about four years ago, when in my neighborhood, a developer made plans to grade a ridge and build a house adjacent to a gully which had, which has a year-round stream flowing through it. Three years ago, in this chamber, the city council denied on appeal a CUP for that, that property. The CUP was denied for reasons other than the stream. However, the architect for that project stood before the council and flatly denied that there was a stream in the gully. Well, I guess he was technically correct in his statement, because according to the laws of Glendale, this stream was not a blue-line stream. There's another ongoing legal dispute within the City of Los Angeles, where a builder wanted to put in a septic tank adjacent to a stream bed in Mandeville Canyon. That stream wasn't a blue-line stream either, so the builder thought he could put his septic tank there. So, you see, this inconsistency in what is considered a protected stream is creating a lot of confusion. Now, we in Glendale greatly value our native trees, so much so that we've enacted laws with severe penalties to protect and preserve these streams, these trees, for the benefit and enjoyment of all Glendaleans and their future generations. If a protected tree is destroyed, the culprit will face fines and legal charges. However, the tree may be replaced with one or more trees, and after many years, that tree will reattain the grandeur of what was lost, but eventually, the community will again be able to enjoy those trees. On the other hand, should a stream be destroyed, it's gone forever. I've compared my Chevy Chase neighborhood to the USGS map. I found streams where there are none on the map, and I have found streams on the map that no longer exist. Where are those streams? They're under asphalt and buildings. Those streams are gone forever, never to return, too late for any federal, state, or city code to save them. So, you can see, the USGS map is not accurate and cannot be relied upon as a guide to protect our remaining streams. I think the city should also take a look at the work being done by the Santa Monica, Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission. This organization is working with the City of Los Angeles to come up with clear stream definition, definition language, and a system to identify and categorize streams. With the recent loss of our beautiful Angeles National Forest, I know that I cherish our little neighborhood stream even more. So, please, let's see if we can change this code.
Thank you. We will address the speakers after the, at the conclusion of the, of their remarks. Michael Tien, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Najarian and council members and staff. My name is Michael Tien, I'm here representing the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council. The issue of protecting our natural resources and our streams is very important to the Coordinating Council, protects our quality of life. The issue of protecting these streams came before the Coordinating Council, before summer, and after lengthy examination of the issue, we would like to present the following resolution, approved 14 September 2009, regarding intermittent flowing streams. Whereas the City of Glendale Municipal Code protects blue-line streams that are designated on the USGS Topographical Quadrangle Maps, hope I got that right, and whereas the citizens of Glendale are very aware that many intermittent and flowing streams have riparian habitat that are not currently protected, and whereas, just as the city protects native trees, which are natural resources to our environment, all flowing and intermittent streams must be likewise protected in perpetuity by the Glendale Municipal Code. And whereas, protection would prohibit grading of any kind, prohibit construction of both private and public structures, and prohibit construction of man-made structures within 30 feet of the center line of any identified intermittent or flowing stream, and whereas the city makes every effort to craft legislation to enforce prohibitions for the protection of our valuable natural resources, and whereas, that the city of, citizens of Glendale are particularly supportive of protecting of our most valuable and irreplaceable natural resources, and whereas, time is, as always, of the essence. Therefore, the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council hereby request that the city council authorize the city's planning commission to hold public hearings and accept comments with regard to amending Section 16437 of the Glendale Municipal Code, which addresses the protection and preservation of all intermittent and flowing streams in addition to the currently designated blue-line streams within the Glendale city limits. Respectfully submitted, Michael Tien, President, Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council. This is particularly important, because since the surveys are no longer happening, and we're no longer identifying blue-line streams, we must have another avenue to protect these natural resources. So, I urge your consideration in forming these public hearings. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Hammond, followed by Mike Mohill.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of council staff and audience. My name is Margaret Hammond, and I come again, as I say, 50-year resident of Glendale, of Adams Hill, actually, for 50 years. Number one, the trash pickup, I wish to bring up again, the bulky trash pickup, that phone number being 818-548-3916. It is free pickup, tenants and homeowners, anybody, city employees can call in when they see huge piles of trash being left day after day and week after week, and report it. Thank you. The other thing is, I would like to know that since Madeleine Blake left, and there's a redistribution of responsibilities to the various other city departments, and if no new employees are going to be hired to, I understood that whatever employees we had were going to take care of everything in place, why is there a need to revamp the old police building? At how many million dollars if we're, if we don't have any more employees, if we're not hiring any more new employees? I'd like to have an answer to that one. The other thing is, the parks in Glendale, I understand, have always understood, are open to the citizens of Glendale, that we can use them and walk on the grass, sit and use the benches, so forth. But I finally had reason to go to Americana, under pressure, and found that it was roped off. Needless to say, I was, said, well, what the heck is this? I want to walk across there to go to that side, and I'm going to do it. So, I walked across the grass to that side, and immediately up came a hire-a-cop and started telling me that I wasn't allowed there. And as course, as I told him, since I am a citizen of Glendale, I own this park, you can't tell me that I can't walk on the grass. So, I immediately called another hire-a-cop, and as I told him, if they laid one finger on me, I would do a citizen's arrest on them, because I'm in the right that I'm on public property and have a right to be in that property and walk on that park, on that grass. So, anyway, that's something that just came up last week, actually. One of the other things is, I would like to question as to how we're doing on the Riverwalk, is, are we getting any cooperation from DreamWorks? I understand that's where the holdup is, is because DreamWorks will not give us the right of way. And I think that's absolutely horrible, after we giving them all the exceptions and whatever was necessary for them to build the building. Why did we let them get away with that without getting something in return? And then, in this time of year, the rain's starting, the homeless, and they're going to be sleeping, I guess, in the armory, I miss part of that. But I, for instance, have a couple bags of clothing in the back of my car for men, particularly, shirts, warm sweaters, pants, socks, and so forth, and I'd like to know if there's a place that we can take those things. You know, they need them. They, they're wet now, and they're going to be cold, and when the weather's dropping into the low whatever 40s, I guess, at times. So, you know, we, you have a warm bed and a good meal to enjoy, that, that's fine, that's great. But sharing with these, with those who don't, the unhappy people who do kind of live on the street and have to take charity, to help them to at least enjoy the basics, you know, is divine. Thank you very much.
Mike Mohill.
Boy, I'm late tonight, aren't I? Missed all the fun. Mike Mohill, long-term resident of Glendale. Headline news, 26th running of the annual motorcycle run, love cancer because of the economy. Numbers down again at the Bob Hope Airport. More hotels are closing throughout the state and the country. The Marriott, I know, in downtown Los Angeles, is on the verge of bankruptcy. And the headline news goes on and on. And this evening, this council approved millions of dollars for the Glendale Water and Power Department. And all due respect to Mr. Steiger, why did we spend $28 million now for that upgrade? $5 million for Consent Number D, to reparking lot, et cetera? Why? Was it an emergency that we had to spend this kind of money now? I'm outraged. I understand from when I walked in, you just rubber-stamped whatever Mr. Geiger wanted, Steiger wanted. And the funniest thing about is the treasurer, and all due respect to our treasurer, he wants $100,000 to have, to have someone help him to find out what's the stock market's going to be like, what's the bond market? You know what it's going to be? Headline, whoops, headline news, it's going to be in the dump. And for that, you need to spend $100,000 of the city's money? Why don't you ask me? I've been telling the city council for over two and a half years that we've been in a recession, and you just keep writing the check. Nobody questions where the money, who, where's the controller in here? Who's watching the, who's watching the store? Please, this is my money, I'm leaving on $1,200 a month on Social Security, and I'm mad as hell. Why don't you have me help the treasurer with his finances? He wants $100,000. Man, I'll do it for free. And $28 million for this heist, be it electronic stuff for the water and electricity? Hey, we got along fine. Why do we need to do it this year? Why don't we put off to five years from now, when we have the money? We're cutting out the, the police department, its personnel, the social services we're cutting out, parks, swimming pools, but we have money for the Glendale Water and Power. Is that, is that the sacred cow here? Are we going to send, are we going to transfer that money to the Glendale General Fund for wages and salaries again this year? This council rubber stamps everything that the Glendale Water and Power Department wants. Maybe you rubber, maybe you rubber stack a check for me, too. I'm mad as hell, and so is the people in the public here. We're living off of check from paycheck to paycheck. Some people have to decide either, either, either food or rent. Foreclosures are up, people are moving out of the city. Foreclosures are up, people are moving out of the city. Did we make any money yesterday, Sunday, on the Unity Festival? Something has to go and give. Do we need a controller for this city to question how we spend our money? $100,000, I'll do it for free. And I'll work overtime for it. I was here this afternoon for two hours, but I'll come in this evening and I'll do it, too, for the treasurer. I mean, what kind of numbers do you need to see when every day it's down, down, down? 18% unemployment. 18%. I didn't say eight, I said 18%. And then our president gets a Nobel Prize prize without getting into politics. This is a joke. State of California is in the toilet, excuse me. Sacramento can't budget, can't balance its budget either. Why isn't people from the city council at Sacramento asking them help send money our way? Man, I'm sorry, I understand that everything was done by consent decree, nothing was questioned by the two city managers. I'm disappointed, truly disappointed. Here I come every week, and the one time I don't show up, you just rubber stamped it. No question asked. Wasn't anybody from the audience asking why they're spending this money? Mrs. Freeman, I thought you were our watchdog. I guess you're new on the council, these other four gentlemen just, you know, same, same usual, why not? $100,000 to give Moody Report, Moody and Standard Report were the same people that gave the Calpers Retirement Fund advice, and the Calpers people go ahead and blame Moody and Standard for their bad advice, and they're getting paid hundreds of thousands of dollars for salaries. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
I'll do it for free. Okay?
Thank you. Mr. Drayman.
Which one do you want?
I'm going to strain myself, Mr. Mayor Protem, but there are a couple of things. Just a point of clarification, I saw nothing in that closed session item that was just referred to about Moody's or Standard and Coors. Bloomberg. Anyway, just, just a small point.
I mean the consent?
Let's see now.
You meant consent. Is it a closed session?
Excuse me, I meant consent. Thank you, Mr. Weaver. I would just like to endorse the, the representations made by Mr. Lee tonight and by Mr. Tien, and I'd like to see if there is another council member that would, or council members that would also endorse the idea of having some public outreach on this and ultimately some discussion debate by the council about expanding our, our municipal code related to blue line streams.
Absolutely.
Would we like that to go directly to council or through Planning Commission?
No, no, I'm suggesting that we direct staff to, well, what I'm actually suggesting is that council discuss directing staff to hold the public, kind of public outreach you're talking about, Mr. Najarian, ultimately with the idea of coming back and making a recommendation to the council related or on the point of expanding our municipal code to, to cover, shall we call it, non-blue line streams.
I think you probably have unanimous support on that.
There's a hand up to your right, by the way.
Start by to say, Mr. Scott and I exchanged emails earlier today, and I suggested he get with staff and provide the information that he has, and with that, then, we can prepare the matter for you to give a specific direction on.
And the other one that I'd like to mention is just to ask for some clarification on the River Walk issue that was raised.
Before you go to River Walk, could I ask a question about the direction to staff about the stream analysis?
Streams, rivers.
Which is, just, it's more of housekeeping. Does, is that something that needs to go to staff to then come back to us if we're going to send it to planning? Or can we shorten the time by just deciding whether it's only going to come back to us or just have it go directly to planning?
What I'm suggesting, Mr. Najarian, is that we instruct planning staff to hold a public outreach and then ultimately bring that back to us.
Okay.
Can that be done without an action item by council? Does that need to be agendized?
No, we can, we'll just take it and work, number one, consistent with your direction now, go out to the public and receive input, and also have staff do an analysis. As some would say, sometimes the devil's in the details, we need to look at it pretty carefully and make sure we bring back a report, and then you can direct us further to go to the planning.
I guess my preference would be to have our staff meet with Mr. Scott, understand this issue, and then come back to you with a plan and specific direction.
Well, I think, Mr. Starbuck, it is broader than just Mr., is it Mr. Scott or Mr. Lee?
Mr. Scott.
Mr. Scott, it's Lee Scott.
Lee Scott.
Lee Scott, sorry. I think it's a little broader than that. We also have a resolution that's been drafted and voted upon by the Homeowners Coordinating Council as well. So perhaps we should include a representative of that.
We'll be happy to do that. I think that's based on Mr. Scott's representation, but, and he has a rather detailed plan on what he'd like to pursue, but we'll do that as well. We'll include a representative of the Homeowners Coordinating Council. But then we'll get a sense of that, what's being proposed, and then come to you, and you can give a specific direction about community outreach, Planning Commission role, and all of that, and we can do that fairly quickly.
I would like to add to that, that one of the chief joys growing up in the Crescent Valley was our, our stream that ran through Crescent Valley Park, or at that time was called Crescent Valley Park, I guess it's, not sure what, it's changed, the names, it has been altered. It ran through Crescent Valley Park and what was Hindenburg Park, and it was a part of the, one of the chief joys of growing up in the area. Gone, gone. Waterfalls, gone. So, yeah, I would, I would wholeheartedly endorse that.
We'll do that.
And then that River Walk. Sir?
I know we have no more remaining issues with DreamWorks, and indeed, as you know, that project is being undertaken by a nonprofit group, the name of which escapes me at the moment. But as we reported here in the past, when Margaret has raised the item at redevelopment agency meetings, we have no remaining issues with, with DreamWorks, and indeed, that project is underway. I can't tell you its current status, but we'll get that for you.
And what I would suggest is if we can have an update that is not just in the form of a communication to the council, but also here at a council meeting, I'm not suggesting a giant PowerPoint presentation, far be it for me to do that, but some kind of an update.
And frankly, I thought we had done that at previous agency meetings when Margaret had raised the issue, but we'll do it again.
It has been some time.
That group is the Friends of the LA River.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Mr. Weaver.
Just briefly, I worked with USGS quadrangle maps for some 40 years with the Corps of Engineers. The intermittent streams of what you're talking about, they're intermittent because some years they flow, some years they don't, depends on how much rain you get. I can go up in Glendale's Canyon, walk up the fire road during wet year, and I can see water pumping out of the sides of the decomposed granite banks. So it's related to that and to the factor that man's development in areas have changed courses of water, et cetera, that have caused some streams to go dry and they no longer exist. So there's a number of factors involved, but I certainly look and see which ones are left. And I, Margaret, I go to the Americana two or three times a week, and there's different times it's roped off. The one that I do know about is Mr. Caruso replaces the grass in the area almost on a monthly basis because of the amount of foot traffic there, and he ropes it off because it's got to take seed to some degree. It's got to last more than a week or two. So I respectfully walk around the roping. The other times, I don't know, we had a car show this weekend when they were setting up. They've had the shows on Wednesday night, and they roped off certain areas. I've never found a problem, I just walk around it. And I guess Mr. Mohill reads Van Guardian because Mr. Allen Silverman is the guy that wrote in, there were everything that Mr. Mohill said tonight, so I guess he's reading it and coming down and telling us about what Mr. Barry Allen already has written. Thank you.
Couple things, Mr. Mohill. Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Let me just touch on one item. Clothing for the homeless. Mr. McFaul, I think you have some info on that.
Yes. At the city's year-round shelter, Path Achieve on Fernando Court, they actually accept clothing. Clothing is in very good, good condition, and it's given out to the residents that are there. They also have the means to take it out to other residents outside the shelter. So on Fernando Court, at Path Achieve, if there was anybody who had clean or, clean used, very good condition, clean used, or new clothing, that would be a place to take it.
Okay, and the bulky item pickup is a great program. You can either call in or just go to the city's website under Public Works. In fact, I just did it this afternoon. I had some old VCR players lying around. So it's free, you put it at your curb on your pickup day, and they'll take care of it.
Sorry. I think I received an email, and maybe you received it as well, somebody had written in after seeing Ms. Hammond, saying that tenants in apartment buildings couldn't call for bulky item pickups, and that was part of the problem, or the landlords were billed or something. Somebody tell me that is or isn't true. Okay, so anybody can call, whether you're a tenant or...
Absolutely, anybody can call. Bulky item pickup, tenants can call, landlords can call, whose tenants may have left items on the curb. A resident who drives by and sees something can call, there's no charge. We want to pick them up on the curb in our schedule so we don't have to pick them up discarded in our, in our alleys and our gutters and, and under bridges. So please do call. And Margaret, if you know of instances where things have sat for long periods of time, you know Steve Zern's number, give him a call.
People may have the wrong idea, because I received an email, so hopefully now people, if you're watching, who are tenants, know that you can call as well. You don't have to just put, put your trash out on the street and leave.
And we want those calls.
And it's e-waste as well. Fluorescent tubes, paints, electronics, as well as bulky items, they will pick up all of that.
And that's where there may be some confusion. The same individuals or crew that picks up, for example, the furniture, will not pick up a television or a computer because of the e-waste that's involved, and so they'll send a different crew. So someone may see somebody remove certain bulky items and leave others. It's not because they don't want to pick them up, another crew's going to have to do that.
But that crew will alert the other crews.
Mr. Drayman.
I am sorry, I just wanted to, Mr. Najarian, I neglected to ask about an item earlier, and I'm wondering if I can entertain it now, related to oral communications.
Please, go ahead.
I've spoken to a number of, I've been contacted by a number of merchants, store owners in Kenneth Village, who all claim that they've been told by city staff that Kenneth Village is a no-smoking zone, period. And as a result, and the question came up because all of their, all but one of their, what do you call them, ashtray receptacles, they're boxes that are basically ashtrays, were removed from the village, only one remains. And so I took a drive over there, and sure enough, there is only the one left, and there are cigarette butts just end up on a daily basis all over the place. Again, I asked some of the residents, the merchants there, and again, I was told that because apparent, and this is according to them, that anywhere on the sidewalk is within 20, 30 feet of a front door of a business or a restaurant, that they've just been told that it is a no-smoking zone. Now, I think something was lost in the translation. However, what is a fact is that they are down to just the one receptacle, and that is insufficient. And, and so rather than let the, the area drown in cigarette butts, discarded cigarette butts, for lack of a place to discard them properly, can we check into that? And perhaps talk to the...
You certainly will.
Perhaps talk to the president of their Merchants Association, Renee.
Thank you. Is there anything else? We do have some new business, I believe. Mr. Starbuck.
Several matters, Mr. Mayor Protem. Let me comment quickly on the police building and Ms. Hammond's questions about the need to utilize the police building. As you know, for as long as that building has been vacant, which has now been several years, there has been a need for its reutilization. And also, as you know, we have a number of operations in Civic Center that are yearning for space, community development housing in particular, neighborhood services, parks and recreation. This reorganization has given us the opportunity to do some consolidation of operations and move forward with a plan for reutilizing the police building. And that will be to house the community planning operation as well as community services and parks. As a result, do a much better job physically of locating our one-stop-shop operations in one building and really servicing it much better than we do in the municipal services building. And with that, then, allowing some other operations, such as city clerk and legal and GWP, to utilize the space that they give up, which they've needed for quite some time. So that was the, the need for the utilization of the old police building. A couple of other items, Americana maintenance, Caruso is responsible for maintaining all of the green space at the Americana, and there is programming that takes place there. So whether for maintenance purposes or because of activities that have been programmed, that space is not always available to the public, and Margaret and others should take their direction from the operational staff there as to its use and not think because it is ultimately owned by the redevelopment agency that is free to use at their whim. Couple of other items, very quickly, on the numbers for GWP is mentioned by...
Mr. Mohill.
Yes, Mr. Mohill, pardon me. Frankly, the addies that we just got along fine, so let's put it off for a few more years, is what has gotten us in some of the trouble we have had in GWP with infrastructure. The investment in, in infrastructure and water and electrical frankly has been to play a great deal of catch-up for allowing things to go another year and then doing that for a long period of time, amounting to decades, as a result, having to make a considerable capital investment in facilities, and you have supported those actions. Lastly, with respect to the treasurer's need for Bloomberg Services, I want to note that that is a five-year contract, something less than $20,000 a year. And I will note that given the high level of attention and frankly, the, the expertise that Mr. Brucki brings to managing the city's portfolio, which is somewhere in the neighborhood of $480 million, that service, and I've, and I've seen the screens in his office, and I have watched him utilize that information in making decisions about investing our almost half a billion dollars in investment portfolio, that I can tell you it's an investment well made, and if it returns to us anything in the neighborhood of even four ten thousandths of one percent on our portfolio, it will have more than paid for itself, because that's the relative proportion we spend. It is money well spent, and Mr. Brucki utilizes those services very effectively for us. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
You say four ten thou, ten thousandths?
Four ten thousandths of one percent.
How many zeros is that after the decimal?
That's about six zeros after the decimal point. Too many to count. That's a very, very small investment for a very, very big return.
Point taken. There's no other comments? Recognize, Mr. Drayman, for...
There is a new business, new business in the form of a motion, so I would take this time to move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to enter into a retainer agreement to utilize legal services of the Pierce Law Firm, PC, Bradley D. Pierce, to assist the city attorney in representing the interests of the city of Glendale in connection with a business goodwill claim against the city by a business formerly located, excuse me, formerly at 1525 Flower Street, Dewop LLC, and to incur all necessary expenses in connection therewith. Agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a fee cap and an estimated budget for the handling of said matter.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Mayor Quintero.
Aye.
Mayor Protem, Najarian.
Yes. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So booked.
Second. We are.